Anyway, congratulations. We're at the second part of the Meet the Candidates Night in Reed Field. The voting will be, when is the voting?
June 11th.
June 11th is the voting for candidates. There are before us in this section, two candidates for school board for two positions in school board. So there's not a competition, which might change the character of your questions and their answers, but I doubt it. We just want to hear from you all as to what you are doing, why you want to do this and what's important to you. So the format is that I will ask a question. You'll have a couple of minutes to introduce yourselves and what you want to talk about. I'll do the same thing at the end, a couple of minutes to wrap it up. We probably won't go the whole time. It's just the two of you. But I have some questions we've sent out in advance, so you can think about it, but we don't have to state it that. Have some questions from the audience, questions online. If you are online, you can type your comments into the comment space and Eric will moderate them for us. But hopefully this will be very informative and you'll learn more about your community. So welcome. Thank you for running. Thank you for holding yourself out there as a candidate. We'll start Patricia with you. You can introduce yourself and what you want to do, and then we'll go to Sean.
Hi, my name is Patricia Morris Clark and I'm running for school board. I was nominated and chosen in August to fulfill out the remainder of a term. And I found it tremendously rewarding and believe I have made a difference and can make, continue to make a difference. And why? Because I have over 17 years of teaching preschool, elementary and adult ed experience. And 20 years of teaching experience at the college and university level in education and mental health. And we're finally seeing the definite connection between mental health and education. I was, I taught and still teach social workers and today's educators how to teach young children. I directed one of the first all-day kindergartens in the state collaborating with Head Start. We provided early intervention and increased parent involvement. I was an early childhood chair and director of the Early Childhood Studies Program at the university, designing new courses in areas of study. Because of all these varied experiences, I understand teachers' needs as well as administrators' budgets. I have the education and experience, I believe, to represent you. In my family life, my husband and I have three daughters, three granddaughters and one grandson, poor thing. Ranging in age between three and 16. We love to go boating in the summer and relish traveling and tasting new foods. We like reading and walking the trails, which is open space, I guess. I enjoy volunteering at Reed Field Community Library, and that's how I got started in volunteering. I volunteered for Storytime and then joined the library board and other boards. I coordinate the Reed Field Play Group and am a lay leader at St. Andrews Church. I'm on the boards of Southern Kennebec Child Development Corporation and the Healthy Communities of the Capital Area, as well as many literacy organizations.
Great, thank you. So Sean, we had a little inside joke that you didn't understand about the open space. We had a question in the previous session about how much open space is there, and we got into quite a dialogue about how to define open space. So that's where that little joke came from. You didn't know. Anyway, so Sean, same for you. If you want to tell us about what you are, who you are, what you do and why you want to do.
Yeah, great. My name's Sean Roderick. I've been, lived here in town since 2012 with my wife and two children. One's in sixth grade and one's in eighth grade at the middle school. They've both gone to school here since they started school and it was one of the reasons why we moved to this community because of the great school district. And I've been on the board since I think 2015. I got appointed to fill a term, been there ever since. I was elected Chair of the Board for this term. I also, my kids are very active in sports. My son plays a lot of hockey all over the East Coast from Florida all the way up to PEI. My daughter does track, cross-country skiing and I'm missing one, field hockey. Yeah. So a lot of, a lot of stuff on the road about me personally. I'm on the Board of Visitors at U Main Farmington. I'm active. I volunteer for rec. I just dumped a baseball game on Saturday. So I'm on the connectivity board, even though I haven't been able to make a lot of the meetings because we just got done negotiations with the teachers and support staff. So that's done. So I can participate a little bit more in the connectivity authority stuff. On the board, I think the district has a lot of great things going. I think we have a lot of great staff, a lot of great teachers, a lot of great involvement of the community in the schools. I feel that the sports, the extracurricular activities, arts nights, I think it's a great district all around. We're continuing on. This was a tough budget cycle, looking at the budget, seeing if maybe we do need to consolidate some of our properties in some of our schools. There's been, there'll be a task force. We voted to form a committee, not a task force, a committee to look at that over the summer. So we're going to be putting some extra work. There'll be community, teachers, parents, kids. Because there's a lot of talk about cost, but if you're going to spread that out amongst small schools and want every school to have a principal and every school to have the exact same thing, there is a cost for that. And if people want to stay that route, that's a choice as taxpayers, but I think it's our job as a board to take a look to see if we can do things differently and that never hurts.
Okay, thank you. So let's talk about some election issues. The first one is, this is an election that looks like Reed Field has 20, 25% participation. Anything you would, I know you're unopposed, but that doesn't mean we can't get people to come to elections and town meetings. So are there particular things that you would like to see done or you do to increase people's engagement in the election process? We'll talk about program later, but in the elections themselves, starting with Sean, sorry. There's only two of you. You got to go back and forth.
Yeah. No, I think people should participate. I mean, whether, I mean, if you look at, I feel the turnout, having come to select board meetings and come to school board meetings, I feel very few people come to school board through the budget process. The room was pretty much empty till the end. I mean, there were some teachers and staff, but that's where the most of your tax dollars are spent. And when it comes to the decisions, I mean, I've spent, and I didn't talk about this before, but in my personal life, I've pretty much worked in electoral process my whole adult life for the last 20 years. I'm a campaign manager. It's my regular job and I believe people should turn out and it does make a difference. Your vote does make a difference and your voice should be heard. People may not always agree with you, but that's why we have the process we have. And it's okay to have disagreements and move on from those disagreements and see what can be done. But I think people need to come out and participate more and start earlier in the process. I mean, it's okay to come at the end, but if you really want to make change, come at the beginning and, you know, see what you can do.
Okay, thank you. Carol? I mean, I don't mean Carol.
Pat. Okay. I think we, the most important thing to do is to listen, to listen to everybody and see what it is that, how they feel, what they think. And every vote is important. As Sean said, please participate in democracy firsthand. It's good to hear from all different people in all different walks of life because every vote does count. And not voting, voting allows others to make decisions for you without your participation. And it's very important.
So talk about challenges, things coming up. Sean talked about potentially issues on schools being consolidated. Start with you. Is there some issue that you are aware of or you think should, we should be aware of, of a big challenge coming up the next three to five years we need to start working on?
Well, I think saving money or cost savings is really important. And we're doing some partnerships with other schools now for classes. We're going to start with classes and we're already doing it with sports. Because we may not have enough for a team, but Winthrop has some and we have some. And so join together, it can be a team. And the same process can be followed for class sizes, especially in the AP or the upper level of courses. And I think doing more of that will allow our students to have more higher level courses or college level courses.
Okay, Sean, I know you talked about organization, but is there something else you see as a big challenge?
I think, I mean, it's always costs, salaries are going up, health insurance is going up. And how do we provide good benefits to the folks that work hard to educate our children? But also keep in mind the needs of our, our friends and neighbors and people who live in our community who are struggling to make ends meet. I think it's a tough act and I think everybody, myself included, needs to be willing to look at all this with an open mind. I mean, meaning if we say we might look at putting all grades in one school, doesn't mean we're definitely going to do that and come into the meeting hollering on how that's a dumb idea isn't going to be effective. Maybe at the end of the day, you won't like the plan that comes out in voice, but from the get-go, some people don't even have already said like, it's dumb to even look at this committee. Maybe you feel that way, but when we, if the budget becomes too much or gets voted down and we have to vote out positions, you might not feel the same way. So it's looking at some of this stuff with an open mind.
Since we're going back and forth, we're not going to start with the same person all the time. So Sean, I'll start with you again. As there, we've talked about costs. Is there something about outcomes that we need to focus on? Are there metrics on outcomes that the school's focusing on for improvements or changes other than costs? I mean, where do we stand in ranks on various metrics that you worry about?
Some of the metrics were not that great when it comes to, to, I know math, we're not, you know, some of the metrics were not that great. And we, we have, I know the administration and stuff at the directive has looked at new ways to teach kids or new ways to do things. And some of that, we haven't seen the outcomes yet, but hopefully we do. And if we don't, then we'll have to go back to the charm board.
Pat, same question. Is there some non-financial metrics that you think that need to be focused on?
Non-financial.
Non-financial. So it's not the budget or the cost has to do with the, let's say the, I mean, the way we usually typically measure is metrics of standings versus other schools. But are there some learning objectives that need to be improved?
Well, I think they're starting a brand-new language arts program. And the reading is vital to a child's success in school. And they're starting it in pre-K, but with pre-K, it's play. I checked on that. And so I think coaching, coaching the teachers as well as having specialists with the students has helped. Because we had some, oh, as all schools, the kids went down and missed things during COVID. And, and that is, that was natural for it to happen, especially with the younger grades. But I think that they are working with specialists and literacy coaches and math coaches to help to increase kids' understanding of, of the subject.
So Carol, we'll start with you. Talking about capital projects as opposed to the operational budget. Are there things that the school education system needs to be focused on the next couple, three years in terms of major spending on capital things like buildings or systems?
Well, we're going, the Department of Education is going to be evaluating all the buildings in district, in the district. And so when we get that, and that's going to be a multi-year project, when we get that report, we will see where we stand as far as the buildings. Some of them are old and may need a lot of work. And is it worth it to fix them up? Or consider some sort of restructuring?
Okay. Sean, anything you can think of that, big, big, big capital projects.
She said they, we put out to bid to a firm that looks at buildings, grounds and stuff that I don't think the contract, no, it hasn't been awarded yet, but it will be by the end of the meeting, by the end of the school year. And that firm will come back with a report on where a building stand. We just know anecdotally from our maintenance that like some of the furnaces and stuff are, I don't want to overplay it, but aren't in the best condition. They're old. And there's some significant expenses that need to be done there, but we hired a professional firm to take a look and see what needs to be done. And some of that recommendation may be we have too many buildings.
Okay. So let me just remind you, if you're watching at home, that this is a time when you should be putting in your comments and Eric will tell us if he observes any showing up. In the meantime, any questions from the floor that you want to talk about before we go? Sir?
I'm Peter Bickerman, live on Thunder Castle Road, have a couple grandchildren in the system now. Anyway, I want to praise you folks for considering consolidation. I know it's a very emotional issue. Some people will say, oh, you can't take my child out of the local school. But given the demographic challenges we face and the need of quality education and limited resources, I think at least it needs to be seriously considered. Now, having praised you folks for that, I have to question, I have a question. I heard at least a rumor that there's going to be the elimination of some foreign language options at the high school level. And I hope that's not true. In this world that we should be increasingly interconnected, I think that we should be encouraging our students to learn more than one language. Is that, am I?
There was some talk about that in the budget process to eliminate some foreign language at the middle school. Because we offer three foreign languages and we did a assessment and a lot of school districts our size only offer two. But after feedback from the community and the teachers, the budget you will vote on on June 11th, or actually you can start voting today. I think the town got their ballots, includes no change to foreign language.
Right. There's German, Spanish and French. German, Spanish and French are still offered in the middle school and the high school, but the high school was never in danger.
No, it was the middle school that was being looked at just because of the size.
And it was one.
Yeah. And of course, as I'm sure you already know, you've heard, the earlier you can start kids on a foreign language, the more likely they're pick it up. So middle, it's important to have those options in middle school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just to add to that, if you look at schools that have consolidated elementary schools, they actually on the same budget can afford with the same amount of teachers we have to offer foreign language K through 12. I think you can see where I stand on consolidation. I'm a huge supporter of it and I, I'll leave it at that.
Anyone else have, you have questions?
So there have been any number of.
You tell us, tell us what your name was before.
I'm sorry. My name's Chris Alvarado. I've lived here for about 14 years now with my wife. We have four kids who have been students all up and down the public school system. In fact, I'm a student myself. I'm graduating from the law school this weekend. There have been any number of surveys that have come out over the last several months about the quality of education in the various states, either measured by, for instance, NUIA scores or standardized scores or in general, just academic achievement. And, you know, I actually showed a graph at the previous meeting with the select board. But in general, it shows that, you know, while Maine was really very highly rated in the 90s, most recently, it's, it's really rated very poorly, if not maybe in the lower 10 states of the country. And, and most alarmingly to me as a resident, is that really in the last three or four years, overlapping with the COVID pandemic and all the policies that were put in place here, there's been an absolute free fall in the way that Maine is rated in terms of education. So why should citizens, I mean, obviously you're not opposed, you're both going to get elected, but why should we feel reassured that the same people who made all these horrible decisions for three years are going to be continuing to make decisions going forward? And especially when, you know, I listened to every single candidate, both for the select board and for the school board say, yeah, we want different voices. We want different perspectives. Please call us. Please make an appointment. We want to hear what we think. And even if we disagree with you, we want to hear from you. But that's not at all what happens in practice. And, you know, there'll be a civil suit that'll address that. So we can go into those details in court. But like, why can you say those things to citizens and then just obviously not follow through? I mean, I'll ask you right now, Sean, and, and, and actually Patricia, I would like to make an appointment to speak with you at some time outside of this, this facility. Can, is that possible for a citizen to come and speak to you outside of a stilted environment like this?
So there's two questions there. One is, do you think you or the board members or the administration for that matter have, are accessible to the community individually or as groups? That's one question. And second is, is there some issue going on in the schools in terms of educational excellence that's keeping us from moving up the chain? Now, that's, the statistic was Maine versus the country and we're not Maine, we're Reed Field, so.
Miranda Cook is, has, is ninth in the state. So I guess Maine is different from Miranda Cook.
But having said that, is there something, we'll get to the second question later, second. But is there something about the education process here that strives for excellence that would move us even higher than ninth? For example, that you know of as a board member?
Well, I think the teachers are very dedicated and they work together. They're doing interdisciplinary projects and teaching now. And they definitely did it before, for also, but they're making a conscious effort to, to do this. And I think our teachers are wonderful.
Okay, Sean, same question. Is there something that we're focusing on that improves excellence even above where we are now?
I mean, our teachers are meeting often to look at curriculum and ways to improve our education system. They still see struggles where they want to help students, you know, the administration, go into workshops and stuff. I mean, when it comes to education as a whole in the state and the policymakers and people that are in charge want to do things different. I have thoughts on that, but as an RSC board member, I feel with what's given to us and the directives that we're, that folks are doing the best they can.
Okay. So let's talk about the second, is there, is there an avenue for individual citizens to speak with the board or with individual board members? Or is, is there a pathway for that?
People come to speak every board meeting.
At the board meetings?
Yeah. There, and there's usually two different times. Well, there has been citizen comments. And then later on, if they wanted to talk to something about the budget. And so people, we had lots of people speak about the budget and, and, and other areas.
So there's a, there's a, you know, the chair on the board, is there an opportunity for individuals who?
Every, every meeting, members of the public can come speak or on the budget. And when it comes to accessing us, we have emails, we have phones. I'm talking to numerous people in this room on the streets, at baseball games. People call my cell phone, people email me, people have stopped by my house. There's a lot of people in this room I've talked to and outside of this room, people from other towns. So I would say the board's accessible.
Okay. So we'll come back to other questions from the floor in a second. I can't remember where we left off. So Pat, I'll start with you. What's the, in terms of thinking of technology and students from little ones all the way up, is there some issue in technology that we need to be addressing? I'm thinking of, I hate to say this, but AI for example. Is there a technology plan or are we focusing on technology in the school system at the board level to accommodate all these kids who need more technology learning?
Well, Diane McGregor is the director of, of technology at the, of the schools and she's wonderful. And there, there has been, you know, there's a staff of people because they not only have to make sure that each child has a computer, but they've got to make sure that it's running and it's really, you know, working. And if it's not, they need to have a substitute. And they are on top of, I think, on the AI issue. And some teachers are actually teaching the positives as well as the negatives. They're definitely. And having projects and assignments devoted to that subject, AI, and how it can be misused and how it can be used to get information. And I, I think they do a, a great job. In fact, I supervise student teachers and I'm in the schools. And Miranda Cook and the Reed Field Schools are far and above the better, best. Of course, I'm a little bit, possibly.
Sean?
Yeah. I mean, I think every kid in our school either has an iPad or a laptop that is fairly up to date. The classrooms have, I can't remember the exact name, polythium boards. I think it's like where the kids can talk to other people anywhere in the world and do presentations. Pretty cool. I know my son gets excited because they talked to an astronaut once. They participated in other classes. Some of the stuff they're doing on the computers, like my daughter was creating videos and showing how to do presentations on things. She taught me and my wife how to do things that I didn't even know existed for work. So it's pretty, and she's in eighth grade. It's pretty impressive what they're learning. And Diane is very frugal. Like she heard that Kent Hill was just going to get rid of all their awesome because they were no good. And her and some staff, I think it was last year or the year before, went down to Kent Hill, took all their stuff, refurbished them. So our kids in every classroom could have that same opportunity. So I think we're, you know, it's pretty impressive with the technology that our kids are using.
I have to tell you, I was in Arizona a couple of months ago and I had, it was a rented electric vehicle unbeknownst to me. And I didn't know how to charge it. And I ended up at a charging port where I couldn't figure it out. And this little seven-year-old girl came over and said, hey, Mr. You need some help? Took my credit card, boom, 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 and I was back.
And then when it comes to AI, I mean, that's a struggle. I mean, as I said, I'm on the Board of Visitors at UMF. And that was one of our last presentations. There's a kind of the old, I won't say old guard, but the older professors versus some of the newer professors. There's a real, and I've listened to a lot of podcasts since then that they recommended we listen to. There's a real struggle with that. And I think there's going to continue to be probably when, probably the same struggle, paper textbooks versus computers and paper and pen versus probably the same struggles that happened then.
Any other questions from all of you who've been sitting here patiently? Sir, glad to have you back.
Marty Hamish again. I work in the community college system as an adjunct teacher. And I'm wondering whether the school, the school district has good connections with the community colleges and with employers to see are the students who come through our programs, are they well-equipped for the next stage? Whether it's college or, or a job. Do you have, are there any formal linkages there?
Sean?
I'll start with, I know the community colleges, they come to the schools, they take kids. It's actually been something that's kind of turned over time. It was like, they still do it. I'm not saying we shouldn't, but they were just taking kids to like Boston or four-year schools and they've kind of worked, not kind of, they have worked in taking the kids to the community colleges. In the last couple of years, I think it's the last three years, we have a program at the Brandon Cook High School. It's called JMG, Jobs Remains Graduates, where teachers and staff can recommend kids that may fit in that model, can be in that program. And there's been some success stories. I know there was a kid who wanted to, kids at our high school can get CDL licenses. And there was a kid who got his CDL license as a part of that program. And he went to apply at KVCC and they said there was a waiting list, but because he already had a CDL, he skipped the waiting list. So there's some success stories there. I truthfully believe there could be more work done there. Because one thing that frustrates me is CATSIE, which is our Career Technical Center. We have empty seats there because of the way some of our classes work. And it's been a director from the board to figure that out. Like, for example, there might be a math class, some math taught at CATSIE, but it doesn't quite meet our requirement to graduate. While we really need to step it up, in my opinion, and others on the board's opinion, to figure out how can we make that math class at CATSIE work? So it doesn't stop a child from going to CATSIE so they can be trained in becoming a CNA or something like that. That's unacceptable to me. And I know to others on the board that there's empty seats there and we have passed that along.
Also, they're, the courses, they're dual enrollment courses so that the kids are taking them from either, I mean, UMA or one of the community colleges and they're, and they're getting credit for it at Miranda Cook. And also they're getting credit for it as a university or, or a college course. And some of the kids have been graduated. And some of the kids have been graduating, the graduates have associate degrees already. Others have degrees, well, they may not have an associate degree, but they have lots of the basics that they'll need that'll, that won't cost them to take again when they get into higher ed.
Because I want to ask you, I think this is my last question, then you can wrap up. Oh, I'm sorry, sure. Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm Bob Peterson. My wife Betty and I have lived here, this was a twenty-sixth winter year. We love it. And I just have to, it's not really a question, it's just a statement. And I'm sure you people are aware of the fact that Maine has the most, one of the lowest states as far as paying their teaching, their staff, their facility, their staff. And the beginning salary. And my wife Beth and I are skinflints. We are tight with our pennies. But can you expect a teacher, especially a young one, with the price of homes, with the children they're wanting, they're bringing up? This is where I think we really have to work at it. As, as hard as it is going to be, but we've got to think of attracting good teachers and staff.
Well, I think Sean can, he just came from negotiations, so he can probably.
I, I, like I said, it's not a question, it's, I wanted to make a statement. I love what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
But it is important and it was important to the board to raise the salaries, especially of the support staff.
Glad to hear that.
Yes, yes.
I don't want to ask what it was asked to raise to.
Well, Sean signed off on, you'll be hearing more about that in the future. I can't, because tonight was the final, they have to bring it back to their.
Has to be voted on now.
Everyone seemed to be happy and it was one of the quicker ones.
Yeah, you can wrap up in a minute. I just want to ask you this question. If somebody came to you and they, you were to show them the school, what would, and we'll start with Sean, what would you show them that would highlight the excellence of the program that would want them to move here?
I, I think I would want to bring them to the school during the school day this past Friday, we have, I think it was Friday, yeah, Friday. I went to all the schools for staff appreciation day. And the excitement of the students being here, it was kind of cool. Like I went to everyone and the kids were excited. Some of the kids knew me, some kids didn't, some of the teachers, but they, like, they wanted to show what they had been doing and kind of chat. So I think like bringing someone to like the high school, middle school, the kids are very excited, bringing them to like a sporting event. I think there's a lot happening. I think people are happy overall. Not everyone's happy, but that's, that's life in general. But I think we have a lot of happy people, a lot of happy kids. And I've heard from teachers and staff that have come here who are making less money. One of my son's teachers, so it's one of the three, you'll know what team, they make less money, but they're excited and they've had a great school year and they're encouraging other teachers to come here.
Well, I would take them to the elementary school here in Reedfield. So that we could have, you could have your two buildings and I have the early childhood part. I would take them to the library because I think the library is the heart of the school. It, it's a heart of our community and it's the heart of the school. And I would show them what, what the librarians do. They do a lot more than check out books and read stories. And I think we need to keep, keep our, they're technicians and so they're getting raises, I hope. But I, I think that we need to appreciate what we have. They support the curriculum so that teachers can go to them for materials. And I'd probably read them a story.
Well, thank you for your time and your candidacy and all the work that you do in the school and I appreciate it. Thank you all for being here. This is the end of our candidate night. Thank you.
Thank you all.